Yani papa, Sichy Hughes, okoskuo Philip Kwaku Boys. Samo Walker, nampenyin fuetitshu wetitsyu. Ne ne shwe Philip Kwaku waraka fawa. Namoframo okoskuo ma uyembashesho. Oya bonde apatebe, meba 2021. Yebi chansedanbi shu oktrabo febene tim. Na politicians yedu wada da da wunfoni, yedu tramo foni, yedu go social media. So I was asking the heads. Eh yeh dam politician oktramo foni. Obra one cement okode, wofanye bibi. Also obra one cement. No yeh dena mujana, dena moktramo foni. We want a government who is a listening government. Government who is ready to support. Government who is so much ready to do these things for our children. Now damme kade meya batan, maswia cheche, yemiyame shem. Enti menyo amampenyinzi hunkomo. No yeh the mayor of the metro, Nastata, open office, Sidako Anopa. No beka chemde, Philip Kwaku School. Embri we du muabro, they yeli lift the image of Philip Kwaku School. Enti eh yezie yefan tokratado, yefan komo amampenyin, yeyen shema, yeyen papa beyama. So I did a letter, he also brought in the request, ne yezu komo amampenyin. Ne yowaa, ne yatu unsa afre, yebisa wase mdo akwaden, nyamenchazi omampenyin besrahin. Oya two years ago, when we were having our 65th Independence Celebration. No kashra Osabaerima, no koye no Osabaerima, susana, no sodana kumadu sana, oya old boy of Philip Kwaku Boys. Then Osabaerima told the president. And so that is the picture when we were cutting sod for massive rehabilitation of Philip Kwaku Boys over there. I'm so passionate about this project. Because the project that the president gave it to us as a birthday gift when it came for the 65th Independence Day. So we are so grateful to the president of the Republic of Ghana. No, omampenyin wa yeh Philip Kwaku Boys inkutiu. Also, asanso akti de Philip Kwaku, girls oso oho. No siyentwi yeh Philip Kwaku Boys, ne yeh nja girls. You know girls, we are special. So omampenyin si, then we are going to have Philip Kwaku girls also rehabilitated. So he added Philip Kwaku girls to Philip Kwaku Boys to be rehabilitated. Now dam buildingi, mushe yekati sodina, oya historic. So we couldn't pull everything down, so that when you go there, you have those stories to tell. Enti no ade yeh maintaining, the pillars are very strong on maintaining aspects of the building. So that is the structure over there. Ne okohwa, ukomodoh depe deko school. There are lots of facilities for the children to study at Philip Kwaku Boys and Girls. And I know by close of this year, it will be commissioned. We are grateful to His Excellency, the President Nana Dudanku Akufadu, and the Vice President. We want to go to health. Central Region, we are blessed. We have one teaching hospital. That is in Tabeting we all know. Now it has even lived its, eh, teaching hospital. And now it's a referrer hospital, as you say. Because people from Western Region, Ashanti Region, Western North and all assess facility or healthcare over there. And I want to commend the CEO of Tabeting, Dr. Eric Injedu, for the human's job he's doing at Tabeting. They are really giving care, really, really doing that. And the staff of Tabeting Hospital, they are doing so much. They are sometimes overwhelmed with the reports that they get over there. And we know Dr. Sian Sari being here. A lot of things will be done for Tabeting. Thank you, Dr. Sian Sari. He is advising the president on health. So once we have him here, we know most of our problems will be solved. So when you come to the regional hospital we don't have. So we have Metro Hospital at Bakano. We have District Hospital 14. And the private, we have four. Then when you come to polyclinic, we have 13 polyclinic, we don't have private polyclinic. Then clinics, we have nine public one. And then we have 49 private ones. And then health centers, we have 63 public health centers. And then five private ones. Chips compound, we have 399. And then others, you know other things that they do there. We have three public ones and then 44 private ones. So in total, we have 603 health facilities dotted in the central region. When we go to Tabeting, that's our teaching hospital. The presidents, Nana Dudanku Akufadu, and the vice presidents, Alajima Hamudu Baomiya, are doing a lot of infrastructure development over there. And I want to run you through quickly. Expansion of the accident and emergency center at the teaching hospital. If you could remember, when COVID came, we're doing things and presidents, in his wisdom, taught it twice that "In the region, we don't have anything like that." So should anything happen, most of us were going to die. So quickly, let's put that emergency center or accident center over there. A very big one. And so it's going to cater for, that's another one we have at Trauma. But this is a very big one, very soon we'll commission that one. And it is at 70% completion. And then financial center was the one I was talking about. When COVID came, we took most of the classrooms as holding centers. We didn't have anything. And this facility, when president came around, we went there to cut sod. And if you look at where the building is now, you would want to go and visit there. Not because you are sick, but you would just want to go and have a look at the facility. It's so beautiful, so big. And so nobody should tell you that your COVID levies was used for something else. It was put in infrastructure to serve the people of the region and in the country. And then we also have construction of patient relative hostel. If you go to most of the hospitals, especially in Tabeting, they don't have anywhere to sleep. So the Tabeting Hospital is putting up a very big facility to hold our mothers, sisters, and brothers who come to visit our patients. And then we have construction of modern, eh, modern eye hospital at Cape Coast Teaching Hospital. And then water transfer station also at the place. We have renovation of polyclinic by the National COVID-19 Trust Fund. And then construction of regional cold room at Cape Coast. I wish that when we finish, you all walk me through there and you would love to be in Central Region. Let's find time to visit our region. There are lots of things that will excite you, that will make you proud that you are part of Central Region and what we are doing together. Ambulances, the ambulance woman is also here. Through her leadership, when she was the minister in charge of that ministry, gave ambulances to the country. Because the presidents, Nana Dudanku Akufadu, and the vice presidents led that charge. And that was the wonderful woman who seriously bought them and we received them and we are using them. So in the central region, we could boast of, before 2017, we had only two ambulances. Only two. Only two. But today, today, we have 23 ambulances in the central region. And they are all in good conditions, perfectly working, and the staff doing so well. Sometimes in the night, they will call them and they will be running to give service to people. Let's give them top-up health facilities, they are doing so well, they are doing so, so well. So we want to continue to say that His Excellency, the presidents, Nana Dudanku Akufadu, and the vice presidents are so committed in ensuring that we have good healthcare facilities across the country. That is why the Agenda 111 also came to be. And the central region, like I've always been telling you. Wonye ne zineye yo, abani, MPP aban. Wonye central region ne zineye papa, Agenda 111 asemi, yewonkukuunkuku awaché. Eight Agenda 111 in the central region. Bijemizi de dodo narawonye, dodo narawonye. Now, esu maso tashre, I shouldn't do this, but I need to let the public know. From here, the Information Minister would support me. Then we'll get the MMDs, their coordinating director, directors, and the assembly staff to work our people through the facilities and the project programs that you have in your various MMDs. For them to appreciate what the government is doing. It is long overdue, and I think the call is now, we are going to do it. So when you go to Asen North, it is 55, 58% complete. Asen South, we have 85% complete. Trifuhimalo Adencha, 75%. Ekunfi, eh, there were issues on their land litigation, now it is cleared. Omahini himself gave us the land, so they are going to have it again. Aguna East, 69. Gomwa Central, Gomwa Central, I know very soon we are going to commission it. It's so, so beautiful. I wish that we can have the Gomwa Central picture for everybody to admire. It's so beautiful. Now we can talk about environment, water, and sanitation. Before 2017, when you talk about ODF, Open Defication Free. Oko community bima, bonde ejanambiya ibinyoho. Enti oja wonan basa basa. Now oya oya rewho. De biyame kade, sedamishse anache de, yankasasuiyezie yene janan. Osan de sa wase masi ejanandwa, odinana. Obesi wunsu do, obesi wesman do. Na moye rewho wunfoni de, se jananu, owo. Tidamana ne intibin ye, owo. Na senfarama boha, oba fahin. Or faweizmim, or roudim. Bueno, aché yekasa yena mayekasa. Enti niyankasa yezie yene janan. To yebi biya, oya yemshisema, odo biere tuwana mo de. Oba puro asheshe de, we have open defecation free communities. 2017, abey reba, na communities niyewa, nai pe, ayebeka de. Obiya wo toilet facility wo nisom, enti wojawanan basa basa. Oye hun papa, nyamen oye enadom, na inkofunpo wenu, osan de oze cholera, oze ba. Na nyamenchazi interventions ibebri ya, kanka the Regional Coordinating Council. Wa yensama ibebri zeboi, washehen. The call was that we should change that behavior. Then kofuna puyano, no biweke ye no hono, no kotoho, unfair. Na wejane nane gogo. Damazin wechum, wapaya hun, de yeye ffin finman tomo fo. Enti oya 2017, 2018 yereban, yedu dam call neto, assembly biya wombo wohumosen. Menyo akasi from 2017 yeko 2018 to the CLTS, wa yekakran, ne yechum, 333,861 our communities ibebri, when yea open defecation. And it's a beautiful thing that we are charging ourselves. That from here, it should be something that we are going to fight to ensure that we have a lot of communities that have been declared ODF. This is very, very important. And I should let you know that it is part of our assessment that help us to get donor funding for some of our projects that we do. So it is so serious that we will all get into rates to get it done. And so this one, Central Region, we have not recorded any cholera. No cholera case in the central region, osan de yezie yehuny. Yekan water and sanitation was em, oya ibura, another bohos nasawotunusso. Abani went to 2,195, ah webe wasama yen. And then it is 766% people, rural communities, insu wohwa, inkofu wonye binom, insu papa, bohwa wonye binom. Central Region, men tumikade, yezu semono, oye za, ombwa hen. Yekan ere kop, asem. Oya treatment plan, abani, I think on the 2020 now, opa watam, another yem president, Nana Dudanku Akufadu, oze asobo fo wofantiman. De oroboa, ma, the waste, was is a waste, you know, oya yemra. If we find it in different places that we don't want, no abaye, misplaced resources. Ye wudu shayi. But momampenyin wa yeh wofantimanu, yemra nde wa yesika. Obo ba boano, obe ma mbebune juma, ma dami ruanyanya wasa konfantiman. Then they will put it into recycling processes, who have a lot of things from there. And then mbebune wobe ye juma yen, obo rajnanta asedu. Boshe Asuna Hospital, ensama wasi ziwon juma, biya wawobidroba, ne mone, bi monya eight womb, nyama bebre, bone mojana ziwu. Wo nyabe being disposed of, but ekohwa, wo hoom, wasi fanfrim. Na wasi baboana, wasi yensama akasaka sibebri. So that is what another thing, yeno omampenyin enabe zee chuzu, wa yeh wo ffin finman to. Ne nanseyara na, yoko boi ano. Oya ne nanseyara, washu foni na, oya fe papa papa, Honorable Okuboi, the Health Minister was there. The Minister for Sanitation and Water Resources was also there, and I also went there. Thank you. And then we want to talk about security. Central Region is relatively calm. Bijebijayeh, inyefimfinman to. Asumdre mapan, wo ffinfinman to. Yenyina yeku yendu mesidu, fe fe fe, obi etimna kumbiare yehunho. Even where we have misunderstanding, you know, yeh wo beautiful way of resolving the issues that comes up. Enti central region, yasumdre region. Regiona, impuntu, warea, pre, impuntwa, ibetuma yebi waha. Ipe de edu sikabe shem iyeye juma, ibetuma osan de asumdre mapan waha. Oya aban the CCTV cameras, abobo vantage point. Enti wajun yowade riye bibi, ne yene wanye akwa, wohumbachro. Bone wade, yen papa dampare nandadom, wa yusho wunfoni, ah, ibi akoye bibi ya wajun yowade rugan, pictures yena woho. Eko the regional capital wa, ibohun, the CCTV cameras are, origi, ensama, ozigu akim. Isumsu ban, kofu wasibon, and it is part of security thing that we are talking about. Yeshre, oya District Assembly Common Fund, and the Ministry of Energy. Wa kwanwabom na, street lighter wasa ba ffinfinman to mwa. Oya 58,575. Ne nyina, obo boi hen, ma sumkebe, ah, oklo koye yeno so wakona. Sumidewa wohwa, na American, inkofu tuwishim, wa yebonibebri. Enti mamese yene de, dam figures are also sum. We should continue to maintain them as we move on, so that we can enjoy the facilities very, very well. Sports and recreation. Eh, ffinfinman to, wan astrotaph yete nwechichi. Astrotaph, nen deba ffinfinman to ma, eh, astrotaph, oye we budama yen. Eko infantimana, astrotaph, fe 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 oho, oye kuiside meko tremo ho. Na mokoye na, nyumdu wabo six, and people were still on the astrotaph having programs. Nemde obriye inda assistum. Na oye fe, oshinkuan, oya homkapa papa. Aguna West, astrotaph akodo, ye we beinwa, Aguna West. Eh wutu senya east astrotaph oho, eh wutu senya west, onu se beinwa. We will, Asen North, insu demara, e juma ku, yene siem. Trifuhimalo Adencha, Apa Adencha West. And Asen North, the Mr. Digital Man himself commissioned it, that is him playing the ball, and he scored. And he scored, so that is him. And so it's helping the youth. So in total, we have 12 astrotaphs in the region. Oboa, mbebonu papa papa, because oye bibiya, oka, mbebonu boom, oma wa yeh basa basa. Wotumotinaho, wasi wongkomo, wasi wachu wenywa, wa yeh bibiya, oze isan bebre hon. Eh, yama meno, ndempu wa yeyi wa astrotapho do, ensama bebre kodo. To yebibi papa, yen pede yeboto tonasi. On roads. Yekan akwanwase mo ffinfinman to. Highways, ye wo highways waha, ye wo feeder roads, ye wo urban roads. Onwana wakambo, na wobo ama, yena kwantepondo, oye yi. The total coverage of roads infrastructure, yaya wo ffinfinman to mwa. Yaya 5,702 coverage in the whole central region. So in percentage wise, when you come to highways, why 82.3%. Urban roads, ye wo 41.55%. Then feeder roads, we have 55%. Yenyumde bebre na, ne yebaye, no amampenyin ka bibi, oze the year of roads. Ebi mese central region, yekwan yeh, abana yeh, akwan papa wo ffinfinman to. Nem mom, sazini biyunho, ne yewanimpua, obi huma yeh. So yeh two, ne be ten, namo wake, nyumye be thousanda, sebona wasin obi huni. Na ban, Ikufadu Baomiya ban, akwana wa yeh wo ffinfinman to mwa. Oye fesso, wa yi yekwanibebri, wasama hen. Oye winiba. Akwani yama America wase min, efikaswa, yezibabuni ba junctiona, the dualization of the road. Damokwanisenyankoponya adoma wuya, is going to open up the region to investors. First, ne deba ffinfinman to. Yes, yeh the heartbeat of tourism. Now warea, if pede bojujunho ffinfinman to, befinkamboduhan, na spend be four, five hours. Na jujunho, abo weydom. So people started going to other regions. Na senyame yadom, madame kwen wuya. Oh, within an hour, you should be in the central region to come and enjoy yourselves with your families. Na menyumdo obama investors subebriwa, baha was wonsika, abeshe. Because se yutukana, be spend be three, four, five hours. Ekonakabutume yusbe one hour, oma oye productive. So this one, we want to say a very big thank you to the presidents, Nana Dudanku Akufadu, and the vice president. And it is the government of Ghana's project. It is not anybody's project. It is a project, thank you very much. It was not anyone's project.
The upgrading and dualization of Kaswa-Wuniba Road. A very important road which forms part of any one, connecting Accra to three major cities on the corridor. That's Wuniba, Cape Coast, and Accra. As you can see, and those who have the experience of traveling on this road, probably traveling in Richwoodumbura, can take you about three hours or more before you can navigate yourself through to go to Accra. And government took a decision to upgrade and dualize the road, so that it will enhance business, tourism, and other economic activities. A project and two lots, one by Ghanaian company called Nakfermont, which is 12 kilometers. And that 12 kilometer has some very important intervention, including underpass, overpass, and other important structures that will totally transform the road. The other lots is from Akotik to Minibar, and that is 18 kilometers. Also by another local company called MM Lovely. Project duration is 36 months. By day of
Another one, oh say you are the whole plane. Yen minister, Honorable Asensu Buache. Oya meyewa madawbe, nemitu kan, kamijinim, kroten, osan de, aban nesanu juma. And so let's give praise, let's give commendation when it is due. Aban noriye, oya Kaswa-Wuniba, panteponote de, oroboa, edu konjes traffic. Abo tourism, asama yeye ke, da kwa the next level. Eh pedja ffinfinman to, ffinfinman to, obe yekraboshe. Obe yekraboshe wo yekwen modim, ma, it is possible. Abefu, nyamali safo ma. Enti, wama yambo yeh humosen de, yezie yensika, yezire basher, e juma muo, ffinfinman to. Now we can talk about, so we have a lot of pictures to show you on the road infrastructure in the central region. So we have before the project and then the after the project. And ekubia woye yeh, yen mamme, oya, the former minister, former MP, Barbara Asha Esi waha. Nabredo, now, okoperi, oya Sino Hydro Project, oze ba Cape Coast North. Momampenyin abezechi. Obo commissioning, na onsu oye fe 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 oho. Enti yama me, eh, me hunenyimoha, yedawasi, wosanu juma no, oye fe papa papa. MPP aban, oye yezineye yo. Oye tsineyi, na pede yasitine moso, oha kare yen. Na menyumde sisi yasube renan orokodo wo, oya Cape Coast North and South, and the whole region. Ekubia owo, ofi, fusurukono, onu beka da brochi, sete na fusuache, be two years, na ko fusuache ra, odo nyembe yuhukwan. Eh wuda brochi, papa papa papa, na wasa ba fusu, ne mukania, wa yeshin, oho. A wana wa jimichin, no butumwa faho, yebri, na washre. Ah we nyumriya, me yentina kare, me yen faho, egohu de, no kase, na menyoroka. Then we can go to Ghana Secondary Cities Support Program. Onusu yeh aban ne sheshe ekoro, nonu wasi ma municipality, men sinososun, na wa born one ma, wo jumeza wasin watrom. So enti ba ffinfinman to mwa, ye wa assemblies, and nine, oya Aguna West, infantimana, eh, Kaswa, no yeh fusu. Ah, Ghana Secondary Cities Support Program, so ibu kodo oho. Na project awari yen, Kaswa demuduwa, nama kumato me yemo sando, bata, baha wa kumsintu adu. Onanere ba, oye anita, worry, jumeza wo ho, na kwanawalididu, adutumin, oye fe papa papa papa, kania didim. Enti Asha, Aguna West, de webe seven projects under the secondary cities. Then one is ongoing, I know that they are putting up some market stores at Mandela Market, a lot of stores that is running there. Eh wutu senya is, bebre, 8 crore. Na wu de kwanosu, owarie papa papa, osan de, yeh minister, yen wakochini bebre. Infantimana, onusu three webe, ebi gudua orokodo wo, anoma bo, na other marketa, onsu wobo kodo yeye. Then let's talk about the unprecedented drip equipment. Ebi sidha, drip machine. Demu chama kachre, emi minte kwa, osan de, dem America de, omampenyin, na nabezechi, wonye ffinfinman to mese yehin, emna mitine mohon. Mesi de minte, osan de, omampenyin nesanu juma, oye fe. Nabezechi, nesanu juma, oye fe. They have really worked. Na eyet, na wunponeshre, nyansashun, kubi anyankoponya zema wo, wakakanzamabom, no wuhu de, at this time in our political life, you know. Yebe yeh yada mazi, no wakakanzamabom, no wosan jamane ba, oye nyankoponya weshre hen. No what is this unique people, wasama hen. Where is the MCE da, four years, me hunbi. De biya, me kwanise yana makoha ibi, 3,000, 5,000, namu sum. Na so ampayi, the full complement of, beka de yeye contractors. And now, no moma yeye contracted, jumeza yi. Osan de, we have the full complement of the machines in all the MMDs. Assembly biya, waniti patrak, or bakho, or water tanker, or motor grader, or roller, or concrete mixer. Na woye no, na na, wama waansuwa, wadi lowbed, osan de machine no, into farm, we barrels kahu? We barrels kahu? Enti chare yeye contractors o. Now, eh, ayane binomo, menti wanasamasse papa, azo yeye fedem, abanza ba. Ipe de je, nedie yeh juma, kasyen wofamo wokun, bombache wokun. Aban nozaba, oya aban Ghana, aban His Excellency Nana Dudanku Akufadu. The Vice President, Alajima Hamudu Baomiya, wasanu juma. Enti no, omampenyin, wa yebipu papa. Then when you come to agriculture, fisheries, and local economic development. Ffinfinman to, oya 2020. Na, yenyi Korea food, sheshe, ne yasai agreement today, yeboba mama imudya, akoneyimwa ffinfinman to. Na imudyan, no odyan edada, ensu no wufum. Korea food watambo bo, oya Central Regional Coordinating Council, nona nenwatai. Na COVID, we can share kakra. Na meba 2021 yezo, neshre the production of rice in the central region, oma yen bozim. That is what has produced the central rice. And eh, yeh was central rice. Yankasa yemu, ayedu ya, ayankasa yemu, ayezie wo ffinfinman to. So the central rice, ona yezina wa, yeh lunch is central rice fe fe. And, oh, what's wa cure diabetes? Because we have a lot of nutrients in that rice. Now, aban osu, wa yebebri, ama farmers, yefu planting for food and jobsa. Eh, 21,000 and over farmers have been registered. And a lot of distribution has gone on fertilizers, subsidized seedlings, subsidized seeds, improved ones for the farmers to be able to cultivate and produce better produce for all of us to enjoy. There has been a lot of massive improvements in the agri sector. And for fisheries, we cannot say much about it, because our mother is here who is going to talk about it. We have one district, one warehouse, under her leadership. And so we have, eh, I think, seven in the region. One district, one warehouse, one district, one factory. Oh my God, if you go to Aguna, eh, Gomwa East, we want to say that that place is the industrial hub. We have more than six of the one district, one factory in Gomwa East. And lots of that. I remember when I mentioned that some journalists wanted to be double sure if what I said was what is happening on the ground. They went there and fili fili, they saw it. So the government said, "I'm going to do one district, one factory." And indeed, he has delivered. And we've completed 11 of one district, one factory projects. And then 13 is also under various stages of completion. We have direct and indirect jobs. More than 15,000 people have been employed. And so you can see the president himself at Ekujus, sipping some of the Ekujus. It's very nice, let's patronize it. Yes, when he had his store in the region two years ago, I believe. And so when you go to, eh, there is this factory at eh, eh wutu senya west, they produce cylinders. We have ones that are producing lubricants for vehicles, and there are lots of them in the region. We talked about rice meal at Asine Kropom, because we want to really produce small in rice. We have our own rice meal at We Have Our Own Rice Mill At Kropon To Support The Farmers. And So Now We Can Talk About The Fishing Harbor At Komenda, Elimina. Elimina, That's K Y Y Y. Eh, I Understand, Oh, He Nese, For The, Ah, The Sixty Years Ago, Na Komenda. Before No Abaye Oh Hen, Na We Su De Wope, Elimina Harbor. We Suin Suin Suin, Namampeni, Nikade, Ose Asobofu Mwayen. Na Kua Fu Jin Zide Fishing Harbor No, Wa Be Ye. Nyamen Cha Zee Kohoko Shre. Wa Ye Kama Kama, Oye Fe Papa, Fishing Harbor No, Is Really Helping Our Fisher Folks. Namoya Fe Wumpunde, We Have Other Facilities In There. Ya Mame, No Ma Woki Ta Mofamba. So Pede Okoto Onena Ma, Oto Mija Bofano Oho, Za Bofani Kusku, Kusuyase. Mama Meno, So Ne Woh Karen, Moya Ni Juma. Yekan Landing Beaches In The Central Region. Namekana, Omampeni, Na Nabe Zechi, Wa Ye Ne Zine Yeyi. Landing Beach, Ya Won Bebrui Wo Fin Fin Man Toh. Landing Beaches, Bebrui, Me Kadame Boba, Azebachi Ahen. Bebrui Sea Defense, Bebrui Na Yaya. Now, Premise Automation Machine. Yen Ymde Ya Mame, Na Wa Ha No Yeme, De Papa Papa, Me Kasa Ni Wijuchado. Osan De Premise, You Know, Oye Kua Fu Hawa Juno Wohu, Wa Kasa, Ni Be Mo Smuggle, Ni Be Mo Yen De. Na Mame, Na Vice President, Mr. Digital Man, Na Juno Sum. Ose Ya Nyani Bibiya, Say, Machine, You Know, Obesi Ho, Me Zee Wakado Kosa. Now, Wo Premise, You Know, Reba, No Middle Man. So Premise Automation Machine Is So, Bebrui Kodo Wo Fin Fin Man Toh. Inti Ya Npapa Na, Ojuna Hona, Oro Commission The Premise Automation Machine. Then We Want To Talk About The Local Economic Development. Local Economic Development, Ipe De Ye Way, Region Nenyuwa, In Terms Of Economic Activities That We Are Doing. Odde Sikaba Ye Kutohun. Sikasu Bebe Ma, I Juma Ni Ye Be Ye Ne Sikaba. Inti, Jumati Bebrui, Na Yezia, Obo Boa Ma, Igueti, Akodo, Masikaso, Akonenyi Bebrui, Wo Fin Fin Man Toh. So Eko Aguna West, Sa Wuzi Juma Bebrui, And Some Of The Districts, What They Are Doing To Help Local Economic Development. This Ya Su, Ya Wolithio Mo Central Region. Central Region, Nyankupony Shra, Odo So, Wa Ye Do Bebrui. Inti, Samerkan Dema Resource Centers, Swa, Aban, Wesi, Eba Youth Employmenta. Aban Afayute Employment Do, Amam, Mbebu Ne Juma Bebrui. Bebrui, In The Danambo Winniba. Manye Ghana Enterprises Agency. Mofamba, One Ma One Startup Kit, Obo Thousand. Wa Winniba, Mama Ke Jinem, Honorable Afenya Ma King Kamahun, Ni Adi Mofame, One Kit Ishewo Zim. Now, Erabako, Omah, Me Rehoi, Wasi Kit Sinamana No. Onenosopede Otupano, Into One Oven, Na Cylinder, Wasen Mananu Tusu. Namembe Sa De, Ajin To Nusu, Nusinko, Ni Be Bi Obeni Skauza Okoto. And More Than Thousand Young Women And Men, What You Could Feel Was Akobobra. These Are What The Government Is Doing To Support Eh, Our Parents. And Then When You Come To Youth And Employment. Community Police, Bebrui Thousand And Over. So In Totality, Youth And Employment, Wa Amahen Kua Fu, More Than Nine Thousand, Almost Ten Thousand People, Getting Decent Jobs To Do. So We Are Doing So Well In The Region. Atukrami, Pede Me Ka. Okay, This Is A Very Unique Thing We Are Doing In The Central Region, That The Central Is. But We Said That The Central Region Is The Heartbeat Of Tourism, Trade, And Investments And All. So Central Region, We Put Together The Central Expo, Where We Bring Together Medium, Small, Medium Scale Businesses, And Empower Them, Support Them. Boshan Obi Wo Ekunku. Businesses, A Wari Ye Wo Ho, Ye Hu Bida. We Brought Them Together, More Than Three Hundred People, Four Hundred People. They Came Together, And Then They Exhibited Their Awards. Some Got The Opportunity To Travel Outside, To Go And Exhibit Their Awards There. And Then We Have Special Initiative, That's A Farmers Market, Where We Bring All Farmers To Come And Sell Their Produce At The Regional Coordinating Council. Any Center That We De Made Fit For Them To Come And Sell. So It's A Unique Opportunity For All Of Us To Get Very Good Stuff To Eat Nutritionally Wise. And There's One Bit Of My Slide That I Want To Talk About, And Really Appreciate His Excellency, The President, Nana Adodan Kua Kufado And The Vice President. And Again, The Chief Justice Of The Republic Of Ghana, Ennatoshi. We Have A Court Complex In Cape Coast. I Understand That That Is The First Court That Was Ever Established For Our People. They Say That Now It's Not A Noble Profession, But It's Dead Noble Profession. His Excellency, The President, Is Cutting Sword For The Commencement Of A New Court Complex In Cape Coast. And That Complex Is Going To Be At Adisadel. I Think They Have A Land Over There To Put Up That Big Structure. Inti Ya Da Ya Mame, Oye, Utukono. Ya Mame, Ennatoshi. Then The Vice President, Alaji Mahamudu Baomiya. Then The President Of The Republic Of Ghana, Nana Adodan Kua Kufado. There, Now, Inzama Award Am Court, Ni Mo No. Ya Wo Two Storey, Three Bedroom House. Ya Wo Living Area, Ya Wo Dining, Ya Wo Kitchen, Ya Wo Storage. And A Very Big Complex For Them To Have Their Meetings And All. It's A Huge Project. So We Want To Appreciate Them For This Youngman's Job. And We'll Continue To Have Faith In Them. I Know That Together, We'll Be Able To Move This Region To The Next Level. So Let's Work Together. Let's Continue To Stay Together And Build The Region. This Is Our Region, And We Make, We Can Make It Happen. Thank You Very Much. God Bless All Of Us. We Still Can Do It Better For Honorable Regional Minister. We Have A Lot To Show In This Region. We Go For A Cultural Display. And We Have The Odikro Royal Company To Give Us A Very, Very Short Cultural Display. A Very Short, Five Minutes.